Welcome, everyone. The time is now 7:30 PM. This is the October 14th, 2021 work session of the Allen Dell Mayor and Council. Welcome to everyone joining us tonight in person at Borough Hall. We are also live streaming our meetings via Zoom webinar for those who prefer to watch from elsewhere. We ask that those present to please mute your devices at this time so as not to distract from the business of the meeting. And as always, there will be several opportunities for the public present to be heard. And we will advise you at the appropriate times. Michelle, please read the Open Public Meeting Act announcement.
Sure. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice requirements have been satisfied. Meeting dates for the year confirmed at the annual meeting are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and on the Borough website, published in the record within the first 10 days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the October 12, 2021 sunshine notice was sent to the record, Ridgewood News and Star Ledger, and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and Borough website.
Great. Thank you, Michelle. Please conduct the roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
Here.
Councilman O'Connell?
Here.
Councilman O'Toole?
Here.
Councilman Sasso?
Here.
Councilman Strouch? Is absent. Councilwoman Wosinski?
Here.
And Mayor Bernstein.
Here. Thank you, Michelle. Public comment, this is the first of three opportunities tonight for the public present to comment. Anyone from the public wishing to speak may come forward to speak and we will give you three minutes. Not seeing anyone in the public present, I or anyone in the public at all, I will close the meeting to the public at this time. And now we move to closed session, so I'm going to ask for a motion to approve Resolution 21-231, which authorizes the governing body to enter into closed session to discuss the acquisition of real property with public funds. So, thank you, Matt. Second?
Second.
Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Holman?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilman Strouch is absent. Councilwoman Wosinski?
Yes.
Okay, so I would like to advise the public that the governing body will be going into closed session at this time. It's anticipated that we will return to work session in five to 10 minutes, so it's 7:32, let's say around 7:40, just to well, not to adjourn the, the, the meeting, but to then continue with our work session. No formal action will be taken during closed session. So with that, we can go to closed session.
Yeah, I might just suggest that the door be closed just in case somebody happens to walk in as the closed session is going on.
Great, thank you. Right, so so we will be closing the door, we'll go into closed session and then we will come out of closed session and continue with our work session.
Amy, Liz, I'll be calling you now.
Okay, great.
Just make sure you mute your Zoom, please.
Well, wait, let's just see.
Okay.
The time is now 7:44 and work session has resumed. Administration Agenda Review on our regular session agenda tonight. We have the second reading and public hearing for ordinance 21-11, and we have seven resolutions on the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions or comments on the agenda items listed on tonight's regular session? Nope. Okay, not seeing anyone, we will go to council reports. Steve? If I start down there, you want to start?
Yeah, absolutely.
Councilman Sasso, you're up.
There hasn't been an official land use meeting since, a committee meeting since since our last council meeting, but there was an adjunct post-storm meeting, which I missed. But that did occur. And that's all I have.
Okay.
We have to schedule a regular committee meeting soon.
Okay, great, thank you. Councilman O'Connell?
Thank you, Mayor. We had a public safety meeting on October 5th. We discussed some parking issues on West Allendale Avenue and car 206 replacement because it got flooded during the storm. We're looking at some insurance monies for the car and for the equipment. And as far as calls into the borough, we had 12,373 911 calls, 1,401. Fire department received 169 calls and AVAC was at 379.
What period of time was that for?
That is as of four o'clock today.
Year to date, year to date.
I'm sorry, how many overall calls?
12,373.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Wosinski, Amy, would you like to give your report?
Sure. So, 2:20, West Crescent is still in the hands of the proposed contractor. They are going through the numbers. We did know it was going to take a long time. I didn't think it was going to take this long. But I guess that's hopefully good news. They're going to value engineer and really drill down the cost. So this really needs to be done before we can close. We need to have an actual price before we, we do our municipal facilities agreement. So we're just sitting tight and we'll see how long it's going to take. It was supposed to be a couple of months, but that's come and gone. So I really am not sure when it is going to be done. It's been a little bit quiet. So I will keep everybody posted when I hear something. Michelle and I met with Capture Point a few weeks ago. We're actually looking to streamline the process for Crestwood Lake. As everybody knows, Capture Point is our software system that we use registration, and this was a huge bonus when we, when we started this, gosh, I guess maybe five or six or seven years ago. It was a big burden off of the, all the people at Borough Hall. But the concern is that next year, since we haven't been using the badges for a while, that the pictures and it's going to be very clunky and very burdensome and a little chaotic. So we talked to them and they actually have an upgraded version. That's not that much more money and I think it will be much better. It's going to be a lot less money on the equipment. We don't actually need pictures. It's going to be a barcode. And I think it's going to streamline the process and make it much easier for residents. Did I miss anything, Michelle?
No, I you covered it.
It was a good meeting. It was a really good meeting because we were just, you know, the, the pictures and it was a little clunky the way we did it before because we did not want to, the, the camera and the printing machine for the badges was like $4,000. And I just did not want to have that at the lake with all the sand and everything. So it was a little bit clunky because we had to get the pictures done at Borough Hall and then we bring them to the lake. So this way, a lot of the burden can actually be put on the lake and we wouldn't, we won't have to deal with that at Borough Hall. Ari, you going to talk about the, the three Boy Scouts in your report?
Yes, I am.
All right. And I think that's pretty much it for me. I've been working with Councilwoman Holman with the water, trying to get the, the word out. We've met with several residents. So I think when we do get the opportunity to explain it to people, they realize that it's definitely the way to go and the best for the borough. It just takes a long time to explain everything because it's very, very complex. So I'm happy to be pushing that along and spreading the word. So that's it.
Great. Thank you so much for your report. Councilman O'Toole?
The Administration Finance and HR Committee has not met officially since our last meeting, but we will get something on the calendar for next week. You'll see on the agenda that capital budget is to be adopted this evening. As I mentioned, when we introduced the budget, this represents a lot of work and some compromises to keep it down. I'd like to thank everyone for working with us and figuring out ways to do more with less. We also received a report for our 2020 audit from Mr. Lurch, and I'm happy to report that there are no recommendations identified. That's all I've got for this evening.
Actually, Matt, the one other thing that we had was the Finance Advisory Committee meeting.
That is correct.
And we explained the deal to them, the economics of the water sale. And I would say it was actually very well attended, like 14 or so members. And every single one of them said that it was definitely, pretty much a no-brainer, I think was the, was the, what's the gist of what came out of it, right?
Yep, that was the overwhelming response, no-brainer. Thanks, Amy.
Great, thank you. Liz, Councilwoman Holman, did you want to give your report now?
I would love to.
Great, thank you, please do.
So in talking about the question on the ballot posing the sale of the Allen Dell Water System for Suez for $18 million, certainly the majority of time has been spent on ensuring that we try to educate the public as to all of the details. And the Finance Committee, I think, was, you know, a positive meeting as well as many of the meetings that I've held with various groups over the past several weeks. I've responded personally to many questions from residents. Obviously, those responses are not created by myself alone. The Water Committee has been amazing at providing support and information and making sure that we have details for questions that residents may ask. And from that, we have created a Q and A document that is available on the Borough website. And I certainly encourage, you know, all of us on the council to make sure that we can easily link people to that Q and A document because I do think that the questions there can really help people understand the value. There also, and we lay, you know, many of their concerns and, and questions. There was a Suez meeting that was, well, Suez hosted meeting at the Red Barn on Tuesday from 2:00 to 4:00, and then again from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And there will be another meeting at the Red Barn hosted by Suez. And, you know, we have people from the Water Committee that have attended for any questions for us. That will also be held on Wednesday, the 20th, starting at 7:00 PM. I think I'm right, right? Anybody check me? 7:00 PM? If you remember, I think it's 7:00. I don't have my water sheet in front of me. So I think it's 7:00 PM at the Red Barn. It'll be an open house. So, you know, hopefully residents that have questions can come and get their questions answered. I think I try to continue to express my desire for residents to learn about the system and understand why I believe that the technical expertise necessary to meet the ever-increasing requirements of the NJDEP is best managed by a company that specializes in water treatment and distribution, that being Suez, and not a small municipality that we don't have a water department. We don't have that same expertise. And I certainly do feel it's important to express that Allen Dell's done well. We've worked very well in our partnership with Suez over the last eight years. And I cannot thank Ron Kistner and Lane Simon for all the work that they've done, you know, balancing all the other duties that they have to keep Allen Dell's system running. It's just with the new specific pressures of PFOS regulations, the lead and copper reporting, the emerging contaminants unknown in our water, and then you add that to the age of our infrastructure. The time has come to sell. And I want to remind everybody that implementing new treatments like PFOS treatment into an aging system can cause unforeseen complications. And if Allen Dell retains the system, we will be managing this unknown. And if Suez, if it is voted and Suez is able to purchase the system, they will use the expertise that their team has gained through the implementation of other, you know, of other systems to ensure that the integration goes on as smoothly as possible. So with that, I reported last meeting that well number 11, the West Crescent well, had been shut down due to some of the storm damage, but would be kept off as, as we begin the fourth quarter because the PFOA results have indicated that this well would go into violation in the fourth quarter. I've asked Mike Freeland to be here tonight to address the council as well as any, you know, anybody from the public to speak to this decision as well as to talk about the status of the temporary PFOS treatment that our team has been working on to install at the New Street Treatment Plant that treats three of our wells prior to going into the distribution system. So I'll stop talking and I'll let the rest be said by Mike, although I might have to chime in. So, you know, don't mute me, Tyler.
I'm not muted, anybody.
Anyway, thanks so much. You know, I'm sure there's so much more I could add, but I think that's enough for now.
Okay, thank you for that. I'm going to give my mayor's report. We have about five minutes left. November 2nd is the general election. This year, voting will be in person at the polls on Election Day. However, early voting has now come to New Jersey. I encourage everyone to check out the flyer in on, in our October newsletter that was recently emailed with information on all the ways registered voters can vote this year. If you have questions, please feel free to reach out to the Bergen County Clerk's Office or the Allen Dell Clerk's Office. Property taxes are due on November 1st with a grace period to pay until November 10th without interest. Applications for the state's, State of New Jersey's 2020 Senior Freeze Property Tax Reimbursement Program are also due on November 1st. The homestead rebate, rebate applications are due by November 30th. And more information on the state's property tax relief program for seniors can be found on the Division of Taxations website. We have put information on in our October newsletter as well. The newsletter is truly chock full with a lot of important information for the residents. 2021 curbside leaf collection has begun. Look for the schedule on our website or in the October newsletter. Free brown leaf bags are available to residents while supplies last at the recycling center during the weekend operating hours. Collection is through the week of December 6th. If you need it, I've not yet obtained a 2021 compost permit. Applications can be found on our website, allenj.gov. Allendellnj.gov. Upcoming events, this Sunday, October 17th, the BCUA will be holding, holding its household hazardous waste collection at Bergen Community College from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, rain or shine. Household hazardous waste events offer Bergen County residents a location for the safe and proper disposal of household-generated hazardous waste such as old paint cans and rechargeable batteries. Visit www.bcu.org for more details and a full list of accepted items. Next Thursday, our Red Barn will be hosting the Bergen County League of Municipalities meeting. Mayors and elected officials from 70 towns in Bergen County as well as county officials will be in attendance. Thank you to Ron Kistner, who, for organizing it and for yes, who will be, be behind the, the grow, which is always a treat. I know it's a big draw. As soon as they heard that, that they're on. And I thank you to USR Mayor Minichetti. Two other things in my mayor's report to have the time? Okay. Eagle Scouts. In September, we, three Eagle Scouts were honored. We have a very strong troop. I'm always amazed. I've given the plaques. I know many of you have as well. What they, what they do at that age to have that poise and maturity and, and to become an eagle is, is a, is a very difficult process. The three of them, Brad Carey, Brendan Stock, and Michael Richardson. Brad Carey included, his project included shelving to properly store kayaks in the shed for safety. He, they, he repaired a broken shed door, the side of the shed with new hardware. That was his project. Brendan Stock renovated an outdoor basketball court at the youth center in Hillburn, Hillburn, New York. And Michael Richardson planned, developed, and built a butterfly sanctuary at Calgary, Calvary Lutheran Church in Allen Dell. So the three of them, congratulations to three of them and their parents and everyone, the family, huge accomplishments. This past Saturday, I attended the Northwest Bergen Mayor's meeting, which is once a month. This past month, this Saturday, it was in Glen Rock. Thanks to Mayor Christine Morieco, we had a big turnout. We discussed a bunch of items that are pressing for all of our, the 13 towns and the mayors, including cannabis, deer, fair share housing, and all the other pressing issues. You know, and Ray, I'm sure you see it from town to town. It's a lot of the same things that, that we're all dealing with. And that is the end of my mayor's report, which brings us to the end of the 8 o'clock. So I would request a motion to adjourn the work session.
So moved.
Thank you, Steve. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Great, okay, everyone stay tuned. Don't go anywhere. It is now 8 o'clock. So time is 8 o'clock. It's October 14th, 2021, regular session of the Allen Dell Mayor and Council. Welcome to everyone who is joining us tonight in person at Bergen, at Borough Hall. Welcome to everyone live streaming our meetings via Zoom webinar for those who prefer to watch from elsewhere. At this time, I would ask everyone present to please mute your devices so as not to distract from the business of the meeting. There'll be two more opportunities for the public to be heard. I will notify you at the appropriate time. Michelle, please read the Open Public Meeting Act announcement.
Sure. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. Meeting dates for the year confirmed at the annual meeting are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and on the Borough website, published in the record within the first 10 days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the October 12, 2021 sunshine notice was sent to the record, Ridgewood News and Star Ledger, and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and Borough website.
Okay, so thank you, Michelle. Let's all rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Michelle, please conduct the roll call.
Sure. Councilwoman Holman?
Here.
Councilman O'Connell?
Here.
Councilman O'Toole?
Here.
Councilman Sasso?
Here.
Councilman Strouch? Is absent. Councilwoman Wosinski?
Here.
And Mayor Bernstein.
Great, here, thank you. We do have a presentation by Mike Freeland, our Borough Engineer, but I'm not sure if he's here right now. So if he's here.
He might be in his office, right?
Okay. Okay, he is here. He was in his office. So tonight, we do have a presentation from Mike Freeland, our Borough Engineer, on temporary treatment at the New Street Water Treatment Plant. So Mike, great to see you.
Well, how is everyone?
Thanks, Mike.
You're welcome. So I'm sure everyone has a little bit of knowledge of where we are. I was asked to come tonight to just make sure everyone is fully familiar with where we are in the process and where we're looking to move forward. So we put together a permit application for the, what we're calling the temporary treatment to address the PFOS issue at the New Street Plant. The application was completed and submitted to the DEP the end of September, beginning of October. And we followed up with an email copy to the DEP on October 4th. We had some discussions with DEP staff. It's been assigned, it's been deemed administratively complete and then, and they started their technical review. The application has been assigned an application number and technical review staff. We've had some initial discussions with them regarding the application. We don't know at this point in time when the review is going to be complete, but they understand that we're looking to get the review expedited as much as possible. So what we are proposing is the wells that go to the New Street Plant extract water from the wells with pumps. Pumps push the water into the treatment facility. It goes through, currently goes through an air stripper and then discharges into a clear well where high-service pumps put it into the distribution system. So we looked at a couple of different scenarios to pull water from the existing treatment train and run it through a temporary treatment system that is going to be comprised of a, a trailer with, with large vessels filled with resin to remove the PFOS. Because of the configuration of the air strippers and, and their sensitivity to pressure, we decided the best course of action is to let the existing well pumps continue to operate, send the water through the air stripper, pull the initially treated water after the air stripper into a clear well and then from the clear well, put it through the secondary treatment and then back into the building to be chlorinated and then put out into the system with the high-service pumps. So we put together the information that, that was required for the permit application and we're in the process of going, doing the more detailed design associated with, you know, electrical requirements, the bacon models of the pumps and the finer details. And we've been trying to work to have the ability to have this constructed and operational before the end of this calendar year. But as a result of the complexity of the permit application, the DEP review, and there's a, a real issue with the supply chain and be able to get material and, and equipment in a timely manner, that it's, you know, become evident that we're not going to be able to get that accomplished before the end of the fourth quarter. So initially, the plan was to postpone the fourth quarter PFOS sampling in anticipation of having this in place and operational and taking that fourth quarter sample after this was fully operational and installed. But because that's not going to happen, now the plan is to take the PFOS sampling as closest to the regular scheduled time as possible. And in all likelihood, it's going to occur in the next week or so. We'll get those results back and, and we'll find out, you know, exactly whether we're going to be over the, for the annual rolling average, quarterly average for the, for the contaminant or not. And as we get those results back, hopefully we'll hear more from the DEP, get a favorable review on their permit, and then we can make a decision on exactly how we want to implement the construction. You know, the discussion has been with, we've had many discussions with Suez and they've been very cooperative and provided a lot of support through the, through the process. There's been some discussion about, you know, a shared arrangement with them taking on responsibility for the rental of the equipment. You know, those details haven't been, haven't been worked out yet.
And I, I think just, Mike, maybe you can, you can just pause for one second. Well, I'd like to add in that, you know, these numbers are not insignificant that, you know, the, the cost for the rental of the treatment equipment pending that it would be needed for three years. It would involve resin replacement, et cetera. Over a period of three years, it's been quoted at $718,000. So, you know, that's, that's for a three-year window of, of the treatment. And we don't know exactly what the build cost would be to, to create the interconnect from our existing system into that treatment. But, you know, so the council knows the discussion with Suez has, at this point, talked around them acquiring that treatment component part and that Allen Dell would take on the portion of it that is building the interconnect side. So none of those details have been finalized yet. But, you know, we're all trying to get to the endpoint of ensuring that we have temporary treatment. And, you know, hopefully we won't go into violation, but the numbers have been certainly trending in that direction. Mike, do you want to speak to that?
We, the, the numbers, if there have been quarters that have been over, there've been quarters that have been slightly below. And, you know, the compliance is based on a annual rolling average of four quarters. So, you know, we don't know for sure if we're going to be over. And it would not be a surprise and all likelihood, we, we probably will be. But, you know, we won't know that until we, we pull that sample and we get those annual results.
Mike, it's helpful. Some further context on what you're saying is, I think the governing body is pretty well aware that the entire notion of a prospective sale of the, the water system is a rather complicated issue. And I, and I know that Councilwoman Holman in particular and Mike have been spending a, a lot of time together with the committee on all the intricacies of that. This is, is really a project within the project, making sure, you know, although it's somewhat related ultimately to the referendum and, and the, the future of the system, what we're really talking about is the public safety aspect in the interim to make sure that the system does not go into violation, which would be an issue front and center irrespective of the pending sale. So I think the, the specifics that Mike has given and the overview that Councilwoman Holman just gave is, is really directed to that aspect, making sure So I think the, the specifics that Mike has given and the overview that Councilwoman Holman just gave is, is really directed to that aspect, making sure that. As the referendum is pending, there is not a violation. The acceleration of the testing will probably give us less a need to speculate on whether we would be in violation. We will probably know. Whether we're just above or below that line. So there is a real benefit in, in that being done. But I think that everybody needs to recognize that really this is. One aspect or as I said, a project within the project really geared to the public safety aspect, making sure that the water doesn't exceed any of the limitations for PFOS or PFPA.
Yeah, thanks, Ray. It's so hard to, to summarize everything. I mean, there are, it's just a very challenging. Task, tasks to keep a system in compliance and, and this is talking about New Street and temporary treatment. And we've actually shut down the West Crescent well because that one, it wasn't, it, it was clear that we were going to go into violation in Q4. So we'll have to look at that next.
The plan was to try to address the, the New Street facility because we had the room to do that and we felt we had the best opportunity. To be able to get that done before the end of the calendar year. Now that we've moved it along and once we have a permit in place and we, and we know exactly which, which direction we're going to go with New Street. Like Councilwoman Holman said, the, the focus will switch then to, you know, to the next well on West Crescent.
Yeah, you know, we've all been taking a deep dive into this and looking, you know, into the wholesale of the water system and realizing that we, you know, the DEP. What they're, you know, handing down, we just don't have the technical expertise. But I was on that one call and that was a great way of putting it, Ray, a project within a project. And just talking about how to manage the treatment system and the complexity of the treatment system. And Liz, you keep on talking about. You know, when you even put a treatment system in, that can mess up the pH. And I was actually just reading today how the, the pH can actually cause. Pipes to leach lead. So it's like above and beyond, but, but not only that, I guess what hit me was the whole management of the whole entire thing. So it's managing like how, who. Who's going to do this? When are we going to do that? Who's going to pay for that? So, you know, looking at this whole big picture, Mike, in your opinion, do you think that it's in Allendale's best interest to sell the water system to Suez?
And generally, you know, when I, all the water systems that I've become involved with, I'm not a proponent from, from the get-go just to. Get rid of the water systems and, and, you know, release the assets to. I, I think, you know, where it makes sense, you know, municipalities should retain control of their water system. But there's certain circumstances here in Allendale that I think, you know, point that this is a, a, a good, a good deal. I think it's a reasonable solution. And I think it's probably in the best long-term interest for, for the borough to. To have this deal go forward. You know, in, in the last six years since I've been here, the, you know, the regulatory climate has, has changed significantly. You know, we have, now we have the PFOS regulation. In, in July of, of 2021, they adopted the lead service line rule. Which, you know, every municipality has to inventory and replace known lead service lines. And. Service lines of unknown material have to be investigated and, and the material determined and that all needs to be done by 2031. You have the Water Quality Accountability Act that, that imposes a lot of requirements with regard to hydrants valves. Annual certifications, your asset management plan. No, it's not any longer simply just, you know, operating a system. Chlorinating your water and sending it to your customers. And, you know, above and beyond that, in, in Allendale. You know, you don't have the ability to produce all your own water. You know, you have to purchase 50% of your water and that, you know, that creates a. A, a revenue issue. And, and impacts, I think, your ability to generate the, the funds that you need to. Put into a renewal replacement account to, to make the needed repairs down the road. You know, we have, you know, the known water quality issues, but you do have aging infrastructure and aging pipes. And, you know, at some point in time, you know, they'll have to be addressed and be replaced.
Great, Mike. Thank you. Does anyone on the council have any, anything to add? Thanks, Mike.
I just wanted to respectfully, I'd like to just mention one thing. Well, Mr. Freeland is still here. Just as in case of Mr. Wiss, the borough is very blessed to have professionals who treat this borough almost like a second home. Not only is Mike working on this endeavor, which is 24/7, it's an amazing job that him and the Water Committee led by Councilwoman Holmes do it. But Mike has also been instrumental in, I said, forgot about Dr. Stormida.
Right.
He's working on specs for Crestwood Lake. He's working on other issues with storm drains. And he actually still takes my calls, which I'm very happy with. So while he's here, I do want to recognize in public. The others, not only, yeah, he's doing with this water, cell water system and the direction and professionals given there, but his, before he goes on, he's told. He appreciates everything else he does.
And Ron, I, I, I second, and I know, you know, everyone on the council and Liz from all the way, you know, every department, he's been instrumental. We've leaned on him. A, a lot and you've answered the bell. You've answered the call each time. But for the longest time, I just thought you were on the beach somewhere, but I realized that that was your Zoom. That was your Zoom background, but I, you know, Ron is correct. We appreciate all of your, all of your service. Great, thank you.
And thank you for taking my calls and Tatiana's calls too, Mike.
Yeah, yeah.
I guess I'm going to call you tomorrow.
Okay, thank you very much.
Because Councilwoman Wosinski mentioned dropping pH, these resins, they're anion resin, right? Which should not affect pH at all.
I, I don't know the specifics on the resin.
I think it drops, drops in the beginning and then it levels out.
Stuff, so I. I'm not 100%.
But I, I don't.
I think Matt, what, what I was, resin is different than granular activated carbon and eventually we'll be putting in. A, the permanent solution is really granular activated carbon because we have to get the tetrachlorelethylene out because those, those bubblers are old. And so there certainly needs to be a look at how all of that can and could affect pH. And so from my perspective, it's just another reason that, you know, Suez has implemented treatment system, both temporary. As well as permanent in other facilities. And so there are certainly many more steps while we've done, you know, many of them in our pre-work. To ensure that, that once any new treatment is put in that, you know, pH and many other things, water pressures, as Mike talked about, they did a lot of work. You know, just with this temporary, trying to ensure that the water pressure, you know, was going to be at an acceptable level. So they're, they're all factors. And I was actually just speaking in general, I wasn't speaking necessarily of PFOS. It was just an article that I was reading and I was just emphasizing the complexity of all the different ones. And this just happened in Newark, New Jersey. So that's why I was mentioning it. Not, I wasn't saying specific to PFOS.
Right, okay. I just wanted to.
Yeah.
Be clear that we weren't going to be, you know, turning it to flint.
It happened in Flint too, actually, yeah.
There were a lot of missteps in Flint, but an anion resin should not remove by carbonate, therefore not dropping the pH.
Great, Matt, thank you for that clarification. Okay, great. Thank you so much, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Well.
Moving through the agenda, public comment on agenda items only. Anyone for the public wish to be heard on agenda items only? Not seeing anyone. We'll close the meeting to the public on agenda items. Approval of minutes, we are, tonight we are approving the May 13, 2021 work session and regular session minutes. Councilwoman Holman needs to abstain.
Yep, 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 yep.
So I would request a motion to approve the May 13, 2021 work session and regular session minutes.
So moved, Sasso.
Thank you, Steve. Second?
Second, O'Connell.
Thank you. Michelle, please conduct the roll call.
Councilwoman Homan.
Abstain.
Councilman O'Connell.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilman Sasso.
Yes.
Councilman Strouch is absent. Councilwoman Wosinski.
Yes.
Great. Ordinance for second reading and public hearing ordinance 21-11. Michelle, please read the title of ordinance 21-11.
Sure. The following ordinance published here with was first read by Title Only on September 23, 2021. And posted on the bulletin board of the lobby of the municipal building and borough website. This is ordinance 21-11, bond ordinance to authorize the making of various public improvements and the acquisition of new additional or replacement equipment and machinery. New information technology equipment, new communication and signal systems equipment. And a new automotive vehicle, including original apparatus and equipment. In, by, and for the borough of Allendale. In the county of Bergen, state of New Jersey to appropriate the sum of 810,000 to pay the cost thereof. To appropriate various brands to make a down payment to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation. To provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds. And to amend bond ordinance number 18-09 adopted on April 12, 2018.
Great, thank you, Michelle. I will open the floor to the public for public comments on ordinance 21-11. Not seeing anyone, I would request a council member to make a motion to move. To pass and adopt on second and final reading ordinance 21-11. Notice of same shall be published according to law. So moved. Thank you, Matt. Second?
Second, O'Connell.
Thank you, Ed. Michelle, please conduct the roll call.
Councilwoman Homan.
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilman Sasso.
Yes.
Councilman Strouch is absent and Councilwoman Wosinski.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Next is the consent agenda. Seven items. I would request a motion to approve the consent agenda. So moved. Thank you, Matt. Second?
Second, Sasso.
Thank you, Steve. Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Holman.
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilman Sasso.
Yes.
Councilman Strouch is absent and Councilwoman Wosinski.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Any unfinished business? Any new business? Committee reports, we, all the council members did the report. I gave my mayor's report, staff reports, attorney Ray Wiss.
Very briefly, as the public presentation indicated, most of our time since the last meeting has been spent on water utility issues. I will thank Councilwoman Holman for that. And other than that, we're working with Mr. Kistner on some property issues and also with the Public Safety Committee on promotional issues. That's essentially it. Thanks, Bear.
Thank you, Ray, for all of your help and your willingness to, to jump on the calls at a moment's notice, for sure.
Thank you. Thank you. Michelle?
Thank you. The clerk's office is just busy preparing for the November 2 election and we continue to. Answer Oprah's as well.
Right, and thank you for, for everything you do. And. The, the time last night within you, which you gave me my binder, just, I mean, I, I can't thank you enough. Don't even apologize. No, I mean, I just, I'm, I'm amazed at what you accomplished and when, by the time it comes to me, it's all put together and it's seamless. So. And I know I speak for everyone. Thank you.
It's, it's not only me, it's a team.
It takes a village, I get it, but you guys are doing great work there.
Thank you.
Michelle, I have a question. Sorry, Michelle, can you, and I, I just, somebody had called me today and I just didn't have the answer in the back of my brain. Can people drop off their mail-in ballot anywhere? Is there, like, do you have, there's a place in Waldwick, Ramsey?
The county has designated locations. I believe they are on our website, but I can email that to you, the list. Yeah.
All right. And it doesn't matter what location, I guess, is the main thing.
That's correct.
Correct. Any, any Burton County resident can drop their ballots in any of the Burton County designated vote by mail.
Thanks so much. Perfect.
Thank you. Ron?
I do have a few things. In regards to the sale of the water, which is something that I can mention these couple items. Again, I deal a lot with day-to-day operations. You know, I spoke to the guys with the boots on the ground with Suez and. They, you know, if the sale does go through, there's 2,700 frock meters in this borough there. The meters we have in there are 11 to 14 years old. I have numerous meters that are needed replacement. Their plan is to change out the meters to more efficient, which is better for our resident meters. That's one thing. Curve boxes, I can't stay on top of curve boxes. We try to do them as they go, which is inconvenient for residents. I just don't have the manpower or budget to fix curve boxes just as a preventive maintenance program. So they also have plans on changing our curve boxes. Which I've heard they've done in West Milford, it's been very successful. Change of curve box is a big, big benefit. Valves are the same thing. Again, we change valves when we get a break and I can't isolate water. We just don't have, I don't have the means, otherwise in a small community, to prevent, do a preventive maintenance valve program. We test the valves and they work and we test them. At two in the morning when they break like West Allendale Avenue, they're going, you know, three meters, three valves up to shut it off. So there's a lot of preventive maintenance programs that a big water company can do that we can't do. Three of the last several breaks, in fact, the one on Myrtle, you know, then I, I know by heart, there's, you know, I think most of you guys know them too. The one on Myrtle, the pipe was 1914. The one on West Crescent, on the corner of West Crescent and Myrtle by Black Mill Works was 1914. And one by Brookside and West Crescent. Very similar age, I couldn't even get a date of that. So as Mike Freeland said, the infrastructure is getting old as well. So we're, you know, those are the things that need to be taken into consideration. The, just the improvement of professional service that comes into those water. I tried, I don't have a horse, I don't live in the town. I really consider this my second home. I really pleased residents who are here and listen to this. It, it's a good thing to give to sell a system. If I was against it, I would tell you, I'm really, really for it. I hope people understand the importance of that. The auction, I see, Council Sasso always loves this. I'm going to be doing the, we have an auction yet this year, myself. Dan Richardson, John Gill, we have a new state-approved company for auctions, online auctions. And we put enough stuff together that it's going to be worth, you know, and we'll bring some money back into the, you know, the money for, back into the town. We'll be doing an auction by the end of the year online to sell some of the equipment that's not usable or, you know, just that we don't need anymore, which is.
Yes, it does. Thank you.
We'll be doing that by the end of the year. I do have to back a couple more professionals. Yeah, I don't give out compliments very easily, but Tyler along, and Tyler along with the company works for Jim Coben. But Tyler's in spearheading it. We're going to bring a new phone system in place, hopefully a kickoff of November 1st. Hopefully we're close.
One or two weeks.
Just the, we all know my strong suits, my weak suits and technology, this kind of stuff, but it's in the clinic. The guy we spoke to me, my colleague, was into clouds and I was worrying about sunny days. So Tyler's taking, so I'll get some credit for the saving of 40, well, should be saving by next year. Maybe a full year, the budget will be saved about $40,000 on this system and. I'm going to thank Tyler and Jim on that and spearheading that and, you know, when he gets resistance. He has learned from me over the years a little bit how to deal with resistance and find your own days. I would call me for the resistance part. So I want to thank you publicly for that. And finally, again, I want to thank Ray. And I got a lot of stuff on my plate. I couldn't do any of this stuff without the help of these people. I mean, again. They're not just professionals, they really are friends to this borough. They, they take this stuff to heart. Ray knows what I'm talking about when it comes to, I got personnel issues I'm dealing with and other issues. And I dealt with other attorneys in my other previous and they don't take these calls and deal with these issues like Ray does. So. We compliment on that. And as you said, last night I came back to see you on a couple of issues.
Right.
I missed you with the senior meeting.
Right.
But Michelle was here. I tried to wait for her. I was past my bedtime.
I tried to. I tried to. I wasn't, I wasn't going to play the waiting game with her. I was going to lose.
We we are blessed to have people that work, go beyond what their job entails.
Oh, for sure.
John Gill, we're off Monday, we're off. I didn't come up, I didn't, I didn't talk to the office. And I get a call from John, he's up here. And I I know Councilwoman Homan knows he was here, working on videos on his own time.
Right.
Good as he realized the importance of trying to get this, you know, sale through. So. A lot of good people doing a lot of good work. I just want to acknowledge all that. Thank you.
And thank you, and I, and I know, and with respect to Ray, you've said that to me candidly, privately, when we speak ten o'clock at night. I mean, you're you're singing, uh, Ray's praise and, you know, we we do feel very, very blessed and fortunate to have you.
Well, thank you, but I I think that we better make sure we include Ron in the conversation.
I was getting there. I was getting there. Our our conversations at ten o'clock at night, our conversations at six-thirty in the morning, our conversations on Saturday and Sunday. I mean, for you, it's a twenty-four seven job and.
Talking about those six-thirty ones.
I didn't say they, I didn't say they were pleasant conversations, but. Okay, um, I think that is it for, um, staff reports. Uh, public comment on any matter at all? How are you, sir?
Reasonably well, thank you.
Name, name and address for the record.
Walter Woodman, three eight Hamilton. Styrofoam hazardous waste.
No.
Still don't know how to get rid of it.
That's the problem. It's not hazardous, but it's not, you can't drop it.
We, we have the information.
Okay. Number two, I have a feeling this is a silly question.
That's okay.
The ballot we received in the mail. I I don't, I'm sure you had nothing to do with it, but I would love to meet the individual who wrote it. I'm not a young chicken anymore. It's extremely, extremely difficult to read. If I didn't know what was going on with most of this stuff. I wouldn't know what to write, what to do. How on earth can an individual of considerable age or inability to read?
So are you referring to page, to the front page or to the, to the back, to page two? The question. It it is hard and I did a video on that, which you can find on the website. Where I indicate where page two and with John Gill, this is where it is. This is where where you vote. You can call me, I'd be happy to walk over, I'd be happy to go to your house and show you, but if you want to go online and go to to my, my video. Um, what I do amongst other things is, um, is talk about the the ballot, where it is on page two. And and where people vote.
But you're right, for the average person, it's it's a difficult read.
Yeah.
It's impossible.
Yeah. Please do.
Michelle Moore can elaborate on this. She had numerous, we, you know, well, Mr. Hogan's office. You can collaborate more if you like, it's, but it's, uh, we had those discussions with them and they, uh, there's two other questions and that's.
Right.
Cost factors and on that they did it, but they're saying that cost factors, the printing that is.
Right. Right, and and so Walter, we we agree and, um, I hope, my video was amongst other things, you know, the other things I said. We all express support for for what's on the ballot and to vote and and how we feel everyone should vote. But, um, in in terms of if you're, if you're voting, this is where it is, this is where, so if you can go there. You can call me, you can call, call Michelle, we will gladly help you and, um, you know, we don't want there to be any misunderstanding or the least amount of misunderstanding with the confusing ballot.
And and Mr. Widmer, we can also, if, uh, tomorrow, if you'd like, we can, um, enlarge the the print for you. Um, so that, uh, you'll be able to read it, but, um, we we did work, um. You know, there was a lot of conversations with the county about, um, the the ballot as as Ron said. Um, and and we really did try to, um, make it as as easy, uh, to read as possible. But there is a lot of information that they have to get on in their very defined space.
Right.
But please contact our office tomorrow. We can get, we can get you, uh, some enlarged, uh, print.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Um, not seeing. Yes, coming up. We're so happy to have you here tonight.
Thank you for all the work you do. I'm not sure if I should have been here at seven thirty. I was at the Highlands Field Hockey Game. I'm so sorry if I'm a little late.
Who won?
We are undefeated, the JV team.
Uh, that's great. You played against my daughter, so I was there. You have a very good team.
Uh, no, yeah, the team has been wonderful and the, the spirit and like the positivity has really been the best. So the compliments to the coaches. Um, I'm Elizabeth Passione. I live at thirty-two Cambridge Drive in Allen Dale. I've never come to a meeting before, so this is, thank you for all the hard work that you do. Um, I'm just gonna read, I sent an email to. An address that I was given when I stopped by here the other day. But I didn't hear back, but I'll just, can I just read it? Is that all right? Okay. Um, I said, the other day at about four thirty PM, I stopped on the crosswalk. By Clumberg Drive and West Crescent Avenue to let two boys walk across the street with their bikes. This is right by, uh, Crestwood Lake, okay? And I was driving, I'm really bad with directions, but I'm driving towards the recycling center. Okay, so I'm coming that direction. On the other side of the crosswalk, I had to flash my headlights to signal other drivers to stop for the boys. This took quite some time, but finally the boys were safe to cross. So I had that car stopped. I was stopped and I signaled to the boys to move with their bikes and they were walking with their bikes. Um, unfortunately, the car behind me started to go around my vehicle and I honked my horn before the driver hit the boys. I yelled at the driver and I told, and he told me that he thought I was turning into Crestwood Lake. Even though I didn't even have my signal on. This crosswalk is not safe in our town. Can we install a blinker beacon? I'm not sure if I'm saying that right, pedestrian crosswalk system. And I'd, I'd like to propose two locations for this. One at Clumberg and Beresford and one at Beresford, which are both intersect at West Crescent, uh, Road. I do not think drivers can see pedestrians crossing these roads at both day and night. I just wondered your opinion on that. So I've seen these visible online. One. I saw a quote for six thousand dollars, another I saw one for two thousand dollars. And essentially you can press a button. And then the sign, the crosswalk, the lights up with blinking lights. I've even seen lights that can go across the street, which I think is ideal. I'm gonna be happy.
Right. It would be, it would be because, in in fact.
Improvements and purpose of mouse, uh, acquisition being, acquisition of new communication signal system, the footprint used for police upon it. Consisting of pedestrian crossing safety signs and radar equipment, appropriate and estimated forces ten thousand down payment. But we're not putting, the one is West Crescent, you're not doing B S, but that is a good, like a home that way.
Yeah.
But the next one is another.
So.
Try out, really?
Right, a- a- and because and.
I'm so happy.
So. Question, what we've been discussing is, Councilman O'Connell, I could see everyone starting to twitch a little bit because w- w- we've been discussing this for for at least a year. Um, and Councilman O'Connell, we've been spearheading it in in public safety. So, um, seems like two.
So happy. You know, I think the combination of COVID really got a lot of kids riding their bikes and walking more, which has been great. Um, but then the traffic and people just getting where they have to go. I mean, these kids just are not crossing safely, so I'm so happy.
And and great, and we actually, and the one on Beresford, we did discuss it, we discussed that three different times, right?
All right. Thank you. That was easy.
Yeah.
Uh, and it's very, so he did apologize, the the man apologized to me, but I just felt bad for the boys because they're looking at me. Now I'm honking, I don't know what to do. He went around me. They're doing the right thing. And then I felt guilty, like, God, I'm waving them across. It was just that.
And I just wanted to apologize because, um, your, uh, email came in through the website, but also through GovPilot. And, um, I did assign it to Public Safety, so you should have gotten an email that it's, you know, was was, uh, being reviewed and. Had been received, so I.
I only sent it not so long ago, so then I thought I would just.
Yeah, I figured it was maybe, um, Friday or or Tuesday, maybe Monday. So, yeah, thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Anyone else from the public wish to be heard? Not seeing anyone? Are you just stretching?
The traffic in, on Crescent, when the kids are let out of school, is beyond understanding. And I'm not complaining, for some, the kids got to be protected.
Right.
I agree with the young lady. But if they could, I don't know what to say. I really don't know what to say. If something could be done to facilitate the traffic movement and the kids crossing the street. It'd be a real benefit to the public. Because my God, that that blockage extends past. You know, uh, Myrtle.
I know. And and we've discussed it, right?
I'm sure you have, and I I don't doubt it.
Right, and if there was, if there was a, even not an easy solution, if there was a, if there was a solution, a viable so- solution. Um, something better, I mean, if these, uh, these like, these improvements are steps that we, with. Full buy-in from the police department and Sergeant Griffith, who's our traffic officer, we're we're trying to figure out the best way to to resolve it or to deal with it.
Releasing kids from school somehow. Might relieve it some, you know.
To to stagger them?
I I don't know.
Right. Yeah, it is. Yeah, it's not our, right, it isn't ours, but we we agree with you. We concur. It's it's an issue. Not seeing anyone else, um, I would request a motion to return the regular session.
So moved.
Thank you, Matt. Second?
Second, Sasso.
Thank you, Steve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, everyone.